Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's special common council meeting. Roll call, please.
Fire?
Here.
Rachel?
Here.
Rosenridge?
Here.
Bargander?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Whitso?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Burrows?
Here.
Budke?
Here.
Hemler?
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
All right, item B, public hearing on November fourteenth, twenty twenty, the proposed twenty twenty-one budget was published in the official city newspaper, Marshfield News Herald. At this time, members of the public are invited to comment on the proposed twenty twenty-one budget. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Please go to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Carrie Weister. My address is eleven oh five Weister Court, Marshfield. Um, I'm very concerned about this increase. For one thing, with COVID going on, businesses are already slowing, except for your big box businesses. Small businesses are going to be forced to either raise prices or hopefully, I hope not, close their doors. Also, you have to think about the elderly. Some of them are still in their own homes and on fixed incomes. What do you expect them to do? And as a landlord, we'll have to increase the rents. We can't absorb that much of a price increase in property taxes. The school referendum just passed again, which is going to be ongoing, so that's additional funds. If you raise the property taxes this much, are you going to let the citizens start to have a decision about major financial expenditures? We voted for the firehouse when the new fire station was put up. Nobody got any choice about City Hall. We wouldn't know the citizens were asked about that. A lot of our money was involved in decisions about that. So if you're going to raise our property taxes this much, do we get a vote on major financial things that are coming up? I feel like that's only the right thing to do. Um, the other thing, Marshfield Utilities. They're going to want, they want to put up a new building. That's going to pass millions of dollars. That's going to raise the price, the rates for them, which in turn raises rates for us. Are we going to get a chance to vote on that and decide whether that happens or not? This is such a trickle-down effect affecting so many different people, it's, it's not even funny. I mean, why are we responsible for you guys not being fiscally responsible in the past? That burden should not fall on the citizen.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Uh, please go to the podium and state your name and address.
I'm Dorothy Schnitzler, Marshfield. Um, I totally agree with Terry. One hundred percent. And I think many, many others living in Marshfield also do. Um, I am a landlord, so far so good. The people that I have as renters haven't lost their job. But I know of people that has and that has put the landlords in jeopardy on their income to pay their bills, and the bills never stop, right? But I just wanted to give Terry a hundred percent approval, okay? Thank you much.
Thank you very much. Uh, second call, anyone from the public wish to address the council? Final call, anyone from the public wish to address the council regarding the budget? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and we'll go to item C. Staff update on any issues related to the proposed twenty twenty-one budget presented by Steve Barge, city administrator, and Ron Almond, the finance director.
Thank you, Mayor. Ron and I will tag team. I'll go first, he'll jump in in the middle, and then I'll finish up again. Three things we want to cover in this update. The first is in your packet, it's the two-page list of changes made during the budget process. Things were kind of fast and furious there for a little while. I don't, we've had four budget meetings, certainly not in the time I've been here, so a lot was happening. So if you turn to the back of your, or scroll to the back of your packet, you'll see a two-page thing that starts out with changes made during the budget process. The first page and the start of the second page is really all travel and training that's been reduced throughout the general fund budgets. I think we talked about that totaling about sixty-two thousand dollars across the board. And then after that, there's a lot more one-on-one, and again, everything labeled one-on-one is general fund for an assortment of things. The total of the cuts made in the general fund, the one-on-one fund, as we often call it, is two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars and change. Then you see some changes made in other funds. Six oh five is EMS, the internal service fund. We talked a lot about trying to deal with some issues in terms of how some of those, those EMI, as we call them, machinery and equipment funds are used to replace certain items. Then we have the capital projects funds, and ultimately, we're making a transfer from the economic development fund to the city for the services provided by the city to further economic development. So you see down toward the bottom of that page, final general fund expenditures, twenty-two million, four-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand, one-hundred-and-forty dollars. That's actually five tenths of a percent less than last year. And I realize, first of all, I applaud the speakers for coming and speaking tonight. Oftentimes, we don't get anybody at these meetings, so thanks for coming out. But just to note that, that what we're talking about tonight is with a half a percent decrease in expenses over last year in the general fund. And then you see the final fund balance applied. I'll call your attention to that number as well. Uh, that's what it takes to balance out the budget, about seven-hundred-thousand dollars. That's a big number, but it's less than expected when we started up this process. And I think Ron would attest when he steps up here to the fact it's really not a bad starting point for us, given where we've been in the last couple of years. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ron to cover his memo, and then I'll finish up with some issues on the tax rate compared to other cities around us.
Thank you. I put together the memo talking about the makeup of the rate. Uh, so I just want to talk about that a little bit and kind of a frequently asked questions too, from all the calls that I fielded myself. Um, so if you look at the breakdown of the tax rate, um, last year, the net rate went up about three-point-five percent. This year, it'll go up about three-point-six percent. So the most common question I get was, well, I thought our taxes were going to go up seven-point-two percent. I know that's not correct. We know that. Um, the Wood County makes up about twenty-two percent, City of Marshfield's about thirty-eight percent, the school district is thirty-six percent, and the tax is about four percent. Uh, so even though we're catching up from past years, um, the other tax jurisdictions were down a little bit to kind of even out the increase. Um, so as Steve mentioned, um, we, our general fund is getting a little bit closer. We ended up with a seven-hundred-and-nine-thousand-dollar deficit, uh, fund balance applied, so we still have a couple of years of expense reductions and, you know, as much we can do to get back. Uh, and I think I wrote this in a memo that we're paying our debt in full for the first time since two thousand and twelve, by my, my count, so hopefully that'll stop our credit rating decrease and kind of give us a fighting chance with Moody's. Um, I think that's all I had on that part of it. Any questions on the rates themselves? Uh, I mentioned that the school levy tax credit went down a little bit from last year, uh, so the net rate's a little bit more than the gross rate, but I'll take any questions and turn it back over to Steve.
Um, Ron, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Because the, the big thing that I've heard certainly from citizens alluded to tonight is the increase. So what is, when we get down to the three-point-five, what will the net-net tax increase be on, say, a hundred-thousand-dollar home from where it is now to where it's going to go?
Sure. Um, so the tax rate last year, again, we have two counties. I usually present Wood County because that's the vast majority of what we're talking about. So last year, the, the tax rate, um, uh, net of the tax credits and everything was twenty-four oh nine. This year, it's twenty-four-point-ninety-six, so that's eighty-seven cents, uh, per thousand dollars of assessed value.
So then on a hundred-thousand-dollar home, is that eighty-seven?
I believe that's eighty-seven dollars.
Okay. And then two-hundred-thousand would be, oh, okay.
Correct. Two, a hundred-and-seventy-four dollars on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house. And again, that's for all taxing jurisdictions, not just the city.
Questions for Ron on this one, please, Mr. Whitso?
And of that eighty-seven-dollar increase that you are estimating, um, how much of that is us?
Um?
Half-ish?
Uh, let's talk, I'd have to prorate the, uh, I'd say it's more than half, so, um, on the, if, we just talked about the gross rate, leave out the levies and the credits and all those kind of things. Ours went up a total of seventy-one cents, uh, and the total went up eighty-five cents. So we're the vast majority of this year's income.
Thank you.
Other questions? Uh, regarding this one? No? All right.
Thank you. Also, you can ask questions of either of us when, when I'm done, if you have things you want to go back to. Uh, but always we look at what our neighboring cities are doing, and obviously, we look at Rapids, Point, and Wausau. So if you look at the back of that, that memo, the last page of Ron's memo, I've inserted here a study that I did. Wisconsin Rapids, for whatever reason, has always been a bit higher than the rest of us. Uh, and they're looking at a two-point-two percent increase this year, which would take into twelve thirty-six. That hasn't been finalized yet, but it looks like that's what they're going to end up at. Um, with ours, we would go to ten-twenty-five, where we've been at nine fifty-four. Point, looks like they're going to end up at, uh, ten sixteen, just below us. And Wausau went through a revaluation. They were at ten dollars and forty-nine cents per thousand evaluation. And as a result, their, their rate is going to go down seven-point-two percent. But keep in mind, that doesn't mean people's tax bills are going to go down at all. In fact, I noted in my comments that their general fund expenditures are going up three-point-four percent this year over last year, so you can kind of bet that if they hadn't done the reval, that the, the tax rate there would go from ten forty-nine to ten sixty-five or ten seventy or something. It would continue to increase by a couple percent, but they get the benefit of seeing themselves back at a hundred percent. And quite frankly, for those people who don't know it, we're at eighty-six percent right now. It's our second year of being below ninety percent, which means in a couple of years, we're really going to be forced pretty much to do a revaluation. I say forced, we want to do one. Uh, it's expensive, but we need to do it for equity purposes. And, uh, when we do that, our tax rate will drop from what it is now considerably, the same way you see evidence of what Wausau's has fallen by getting their value back up to a hundred percent of what it should be according to the state of Wisconsin. So that's where we stand in comparison to our neighbors. And, uh, I guess at this point, I take questions, or Ron can take questions from anybody on anything related to our update.
Questions from the council? Mr. Wagner?
Uh, Steve, um, there, there was some concern also about the, expressed by the public in the public hearing about the possibility of a, of an additional increase um, on the, for the utility building, if and when that should happen. Uh, can you explain where the funding will come from, from the utility building, and what, what the city's responsibility, or lack thereof, is?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you. Uh, the city's only role in the Marshall Utilities building expansion is the bonding. They'll be asking us in January for bonding authority to borrow the money for that project. And, uh, the, there'll be no tax money involved. This would be entirely through the, the rate payers, and um, they have to go to the PSC. For those of you who don't know, the Public Service Commission limits how much they could increase their rates. And that comes into play when you do a building expansion, and they look at it very, you know, critically. I won't deny that the rates will likely increase. I have, don't know the, the dollar amount at this point to the percentage, but that will be told the outside of the city proper, per se.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to, um, item D, discuss any desired changes to the city's proposed twenty twenty-one budget for consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-dash-five-six. Anything from the, Steve, did you want to? That's presented by you, but is that? We're just discussing any changes?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I definitely have to say.
For, for the council, then, any, any changes? All right, seeing none, we will go on then to item E. Uh, request to approve resolution number twenty twenty-dash-five-six determining and levying the amount to be raised by taxation for city purposes for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, presented by Ron Almond, Finance Director.
Uh, in front of you have the resolution required every year to, uh, finish up the budget process and print our tax bills. It's got the stated tax rate, the dollar amount, um, and it is what it is. So, um, is there any questions about the rate, um?
Any questions for Ron? Um, no? All right, so you're looking then for, then there, is there a motion to approve a resolution number twenty twenty-dash-fifty-six?
Thank you, Mayor. I meant to say this earlier. There was a lot of confusion at our last meeting about what requires a supermajority uh, versus what requires a simple majority, and conferring with the city attorney, he's conveyed the fact that from everything he's looked at, uh, statutorily and with the city code, the only time a supermajority is required is to amend the budget, to do a budget resolution. So all it takes tonight is a simple majority. You get into the January and the staff comes forward with a budget resolution. Now you're looking for seven votes to, to amend it. That's considered an action that is significant. Not that adopting a budget's not significant, it is, but that only requires a simple majority.
All right. So again, is there a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-dash-fifty-six? Motion by Mr. Wagner, is there a second? Second by Mr. Hemler, any discussion? Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is not the budget we want. This is not what we wanted to do. The, the truth of the matter is, I guess it was almost a little over two years ago that the city started struggling with an accounting process that was, um, basically giving us a false sense of security. It looked like we were in good shape, but we were balancing the budget with money that had to be paid back to a, a more restrictive fund. But what happened is, we ended up having to do it. The only thing I am proud of in this budget is what Mr. Almond said. For the first time since two thousand and twelve, we are using our, our authority under the, the state constitution to levy for the entire amount of our debt. You know, we're not deadbeats. We make a debt, we pay for it. That's it. And basically, the assumption we were always making under the old system was that the money that was being shown as, as the source of revenues being shown to pay off the debt was money that could properly be spent that way. And here we are. The fail-safe systems that we had in place to keep that from happening failed. They absolutely failed. I, we could have, one of the options we had available to us was to do this a little bit at a time. The problem is that in order to do that, we would have to take money from the fund balance, fund balance. The, the general fund, fund balance, I guess that's the best way to say it. And every time we do that, the, we get rated down on our credit rating through Moody's. And what that means is that when we do have to borrow money, if for nothing else than streets, if for nothing else than the common basic things we need to run a functioning government, we would pay more for it, and we would continue paying more for it for many years to come, for the length of a bond issue, be it ten or twenty years. The reason I went along with this and the reason I made this motion here tonight is because I want to stop the bleeding. I want to stop it once and for all. And I hope it passes, um, but I, um, I really don't want to go through this again. I don't want to drag this out for years, and I don't want to drag the citizens through this every year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Whitso?
Thank you. First, I guess I'd like to say thanks to, uh, Mr. Almond for unraveling, um, the tangled web that his predecessor had put together. I know that it's been pretty harsh, two years of untangling everything and coming forth with news that the common council didn't want to hear and that the citizens don't want to hear. But I appreciate you making things much more transparent, uh, much clearer, and, um, I will echo, uh, Mr. Wagner's comment that it's, it's debt that we owe. It's not like we can't not borrow. I mean, it, this is, this is completely independent of any potential borrowing um, that we would be doing for projects next year. This is stuff we already owe. It's money. It's the credit card bill that's coming due that we should have been paying, that we've been deferring or using other monies to take care of. Had we known information, um, prior to you coming on board and unraveling all of this, I know that I, and I'm sure some, some of my colleagues would have, uh, made other decisions regarding borrowing in the past few years, but with a false sense of security, as had been mentioned, business was business, and we kept business going. So it's definitely time that we hunker down. I also want to, uh, say thank you to Mr. Barge and the city leadership, um, within the city hall here, the, the department heads for doing everything you possibly could to actually decrease our expenses for the year. Um, it's going to be a tough belt-tightening period until things get back on track. I'm very happy that, um, we have a bubble sort of that we're on, and that once we get past this bubble, that the amount we have to pay on that, on the loans will be decreasing as we go along, which will help us become a little bit more secure.
we go along, which will help us become a little bit more secure. But this is a really, really tough vote. I was very adamant, my colleagues can attest to the fact that I was very, very vocal about no tax increase during COVID. I think the, the one thing that is still sitting in my mind, however, is the comment that was made, that if we don't do this, we're kicking the can down the road to have to deal with it again next year. And it has to be done, I believe, once and for all.
Mr. Hemler.
Thank you, Your Honor. Oh, I wish to thank Ron Aman for doing a marvelous job at something that was very difficult, I'm sure. And, but it brought us to a point of reality that we didn't have before for approximately ten years. It was unfortunate, but, you know, we on a council are layperson, we're not accountants, and it taught me not to, to trust certain numbers coming from certain people. So I regret being part of this, but Mr. Wagner said it correctly. If we don't, we're going to be going through the same exercise next year, and that's unfortunate. We can't avoid it. We need to do it. And I hope that the administration will keep us, the council informed in a proper way and to avoid this in the future. I really feel bad about it, but that is the way it is at this point. We have no choice. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, I would like to say, unless there's any other comments, I'd like to thank Steve and Ron for everything that, that you all did through this. This has been a grueling three to four months. City staff, what you all went through to get us where we needed to go with coming up with something, cut this, cut that, and whatnot. Thank you. You did an amazing job. None of us wanted to do a tax increase during COVID. I was calling for no tax increase back in April. The facts got in the way, how bad the bleed was. And we either, you either fix the bleed or, or it just gets worse. And all the employees that helped with that as well. And this is not something that we want to do. For those of you watching, if you could feel what was in the room right now, this is not a good thing. This, this, it, it does not feel good, but we do know what has to be done. And finally, I would like to thank the council for what you all did through this process. The engagement that the council had going through this was grueling. Asked a lot of great, great questions, and we're completely engaged because they knew, they knew how big of a deal this was to everybody. And so I, I, you all did a great job, and I know how difficult this is. Having said that, is there any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Rachel?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Bargander?
No.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Fisher?
No.
Barrows?
No.
Budke?
Yes.
Hemler?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries seven to three. And that is the final thing on the agenda tonight, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Budke, a second by Mrs. Barrows. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned.